You did all the work.
And the fact that I wrote them down, right, is amazing. And anyway, here I am.
Norman's on.
Oh, hi Norman, how are you?
Who's this?
It's Jan.
Oh, I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear everybody.
Well, good, good. Well, when the weather gets a little better, we'll have you out on the deck. We'll socially distance and have a cocktail.
That would be, that would be fine.
Good, very good, all right.
All right, well, we have a quorum, so we could get started.
Yes, we can.
All right, my name is John Myers and the Chair of the Commission. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Historic Resources Commission, but somewhat irregular as it's a Zoom meeting. But this is the new normal that we're working under. I will take a roll call of Commission members. And I see Jack McInnany and Chris Hacker, Marilyn Kaplan, Aaron Tobin, and I hear Norman Rice.
Here I am.
All right.
Normal.
So I
You wouldn't want, you wouldn't want to see me anyway.
Oh, Norman, that's not true. We'd love to see.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Let's see, I don't know if we have any guests signed in. But obviously, if there are people that have comments after we have discussed the application, they are welcome to make comments. We just request they limit their comments to the subject matter at hand and limit it to three minutes in duration. Also joining us are Aaron Glennon from the Department of Development and Planning and Amy Levine from the Law Department, trying to keep us all honest on what we're doing. And we can proceed with the, the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have one item on the agenda that is 18 First Street in the Ten Brook Triangle. And I see there are two people here to speak for that project. So if you could identify yourselves for the record and present your application to the Commission, we would appreciate it.
Okay, I just lost my screen. Let's see if I can get it back. My name is Bob Sheehan. I'm the homeowner at 18 First Street. Wait a minute, I've lost, something has occurred here that I can't see anything.
I can see you.
Okay, well, I hope my looks haven't changed at all. I was not touching my device and, oh, wait a minute. What happens there? Well, I don't know, something has occurred, not of my own doing. However, we're, yes, I'm the applicant, I'm the homeowner. We rehab the house at 18 First Street and we are now hoping to build a garage. There was a garage on the, on the site when we purchased the home. It had to come down in an emergency demolition back in February. It was in pretty tough shape to begin with. So we have proposed to replace it with a garage with a dimension that is something. The dimensions are 22 by 24 and that meets or matches the dimensions of a garage two doors down on Ludlow Alley. I'll just also introduce or mention that our contractor that we're using, Mike Kowalczek, who is also in this Zoom call, he is here to answer maybe any questions that I can't answer. So.
Good evening, Bob. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I guess I don't know exactly what information specifically you want from me. I'm happy to answer any and all questions you have. I guess I'd say fire away.
All right, we, we certainly are delighted to see development in this neighborhood and to see movement on the property. And the construction of the carriage house at the, the back is certainly consistent with the, the planning in that neighborhood and carriage houses tend to be charming little unique structures. So, you know, they contribute to the the neighborhood equally to properties that front on the main address, the street address, albeit a different character associated with them. Are there any photographs of what was on the site originally that was torn down?
Oh, there it is. This right here is
Okay.
August 2018.
Okay.
For 2019, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I mean, it's, it certainly has a, a different character than what's being proposed. So that's not that we necessarily replace things exactly, but do evoke some of the character. I would invite other Commission members to make some comments. I, the, while a number of your neighbors seem to have very large garage door openings, was any consideration given to doing two separate garage doors to kind of scale them down a little bit?
Um, for better or for worse, I will answer that question. No, we didn't seriously consider because we did not want to, I didn't want to make, have to make the garage any larger than it needed to be, number one. But number two, if you look at the pictures that Aaron is displaying, you know, the majority of the garages that are on, in Ludlow Alley do contain their one, their one-door garage double whip. So, and if, if you look at the picture that Aaron has on the left there, the gray garage, that's directly across Ludlow Alley from our house. And you'll note that they've got the stucco in the front and really just the sides. But what we're proposing, why we, why we chose the stucco on the front, because it is a pretty easy match to the, to the structure across the street. And I would just also mention there is a, an additional stuccoed garage a little further up towards the top of Ludlow Alley. So we felt that it meets, meets the cost, you know, it's, it's a cost that we can
Right.
absorb to put stucco. But I can certainly appreciate, you know, the look of brick is nice, but from a financial standpoint, it's, it's a big difference.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with the, with the stucco. But in the picture that I saw, the door, we could have a picture of the proposed door is radically different and it's more like a mid, mid-century 1950s. It's a very horizontal element. And there are no horizontal elements anywhere on the Ten Brook Triangle or in its alleys. Most of them have lots of little squares. I, I know you did a different top on it than what was originally there on the second floor. But I noticed that the windows are essentially the same short windows as right down the street on it. So there's a certain compatibility and rhythm of the, the streets that choose to have apple windows rather than an upper door to bring hay in or that type of thing. But I think the, the door is just not compatible with anything that would certainly never be Victorian and it's, it's obviously not the same as was there, but I think almost everything we look at them, they all have panels. Usually four, maybe more of panels with, with negative space in between each panel. And you don't have that, you don't have that horizontal look, which just seems like it would be better, better found in a, in a mid 20th century house and certainly not in a Victorian one. If you take a look at some of those others that are already there as existing, existing doorways, it wouldn't be that hard to have something more compatible.
Yeah, Jack, I, I appreciate your comments. I just, I have to say, I thought I had here a better picture of the actual door. And I'll have to defer to Mike, whether he has it or not, but we can certainly get it. I, I'm under the impression the actual door that we ordered, Mike, does it have horizontal panels to it?
Is, yeah, if I can help you here, Bob, a little bit, you're actually, you're looking at number 14, as you see in the picture here, to the right side, which is your actual replica of the house that we're going to be building. The drawing that I proposed was just in rendering of it, but the, the door that you're actually looking at is very similar to what Bob and Kathy are going to put on that structure.
That, that would be fine. That would be very appropriate.
So that's an multi-panel door.
Yes. Multi. What you're looking at is, what you see in that picture right now to the right is very, very similar as to what, I, I, I can't almost say it's exactly, but it's very similar to what's going to go up there.
Okay.
And my, just so you understand, my, my CAD software that I had just didn't have a replica of, of a production that would produce those nine squares. So what I did is we actually
We lost you, I think, the last
You there for a while.
Okay. I'll repeat again, what we're, the rendition that I drew was an 18 by seven door, which is what you're looking at that picture right now. And the, I just didn't have a rendering that shows that, that facade that you're looking at with the door. But what you're looking at is what the door will very closely be.
Aaron, would you go back to the proposed south elevation? And I'll show you what, yeah, great. And I'll show you what I want, if you, if you can, to look at as we go through these. I want to look at the cornice and both of the existing, or the, the building that was lost and then the other buildings in the area, the cornice, and also the trim around the windows and also the trim around the door. So can you go back to the original structure on the site? Okay, so there, I can't tell, do we know if that was a metal ledge or is it like a terracotta coping stone at the top of the parrot head wall? It was metal?
Yeah, looks like metal.
Okay, so so note that, note the trim around the window, second floor, and then the header at the door opening. Okay, now if you could go through some of the photos on the street, I'll ask folks to look at that. Okay, so we've got a boxed in, we've got a boxed in cornice on both of these buildings. And I think, actually, let's take the cornice one at a time. I think it'll be too confusing otherwise. So if you could just run through some of those up and downs to up and down the street. So I would ask everyone to give some thought to that projecting cornice as an element. That's kind of number one. And now, if we can go back and, so then I guess my next question will be about the treatment of the openings of the second floor windows. And we, we have headers and/or lintels, I think, on most of these buildings. And we don't have that kind of one by four, whatever it is, flat trim that is proposed on the elevation drawing.
Almost nothing on the whole, on the whole alleyway has any vertical elements on the side of every, every, every window or door.
Exactly.
Everything is
They're all made returns to opening.
They're just recessed a little bit inside and some have something on the top or the bottom, but nobody has anything to the left or right.
Correct. So that would be one question. And then the other will be, you'll see here, we do have projecting sills, which kind of I think is probably exists at most openings. And then at the garage doors, again, I'm sorry, Aaron, we just back and forth, that the garage doors, there's some sort of a a frame for the headers that we see. Often they extend a bit beyond the opening. It's probably would have existed previously. So those are some of the character-defining features in this group of buildings that I know. And now if we can go back, I guess, to the proposed elevation drawing.
In the original, it was no header at all.
Yeah. Well, it been altered, I think, too.
On 18?
I think so. I'm sorry, Aaron, go back to the
So this is 18.
I don't know.
Steel lintel there for the garage door.
Yes, well, they all have something like that.
Right.
The structure, but for the, for the upper level, the one three down that has the two windows, which is what's proposed here, and for the one that has the the opening door to send hay up, et cetera, they have nothing. There's no upper, but they, they do, almost everybody has a small protect, a small projection of the sill.
Right.
That's almost universal, that's universal to the street on the, certainly the second floor all the way.
Right. And this must have a steel, a flat steel.
Composition is, what, one, two, three doors down with the two punched openings above and then the, the long double garage door.
So with that in mind, now we can go back to the south, the proposed south elevation. Please. So those were, those were probably my comments is, it's pretty, it feels that it's very flat and a projecting cornice would kind of general dimensions as we see on the other buildings, I think, would be helpful. And the flat trim all the way around the two second floor openings and the garage door. We don't see that here. It's kind of a very, it doesn't fit in here in my mind. I'd rather see a return back.
Well, what this drawing and proposed drawing is showing you is, is done, the stucco face of it on the south side, that is going to have a one by four projection. So around the window top, out of two sides will both be one horse projecting out to identify the window as we are saying, thing we're doing with the 18 by seven garage door. The two lines that you're looking left and right on both sides is the one, it's a four-inch projection, a one inch off of the existing stucco wall.
Is that rendered in stucco or is that a wood trim?
It would be rendered in stucco, just to blend it because we really didn't want to alter that. I mean, it can be either way, but we're just going to do it in stucco for it, for that version of it. Just to keep it clean, the clean lines look what it's a simple projection.
So this is even simpler to avoid that, right? I mean, we don't see that otherwise in the other photos that we, that we just looked at. So to eliminate what you just described is a simpler process, yeah? The stucco just return with no indication of real trim or scribing or faux-trim?
Well, it is that the trim around the door is one, it's four inches wide, but it'll be sticked out. It'll be sticking out on the south side. So what you're looking at from a face front, you will see four inches of, of a different level of stucco.
So you're, Mike, you're saying you're going to stucco over the trim that you've, that you'll be installing around the door, correct?
The trim, exactly right. So when we, when you finish the stucco on the face of south side, that'll all be one smooth piece. And then what'll happen is, is four inches, one by four, all the way around the door and all the windows will be then added on top of it to give it a projected look.
And my comment was in contrast to that, that around the window and the door openings of those structures that we kept, that we just kind of looked at, we don't have that projecting trim. It just is a return right back. And I think that's a little more in keeping with the details in, along the alley. You want to go back, Aaron, to those, just to make sure we're all at least talking about the same stuff? A couple of those photos? Yeah, that one's good. Or even any of the brick, the brick ones too.
Okay, so you're, you're basically saying, Marilyn, you don't want, you, we don't want trim. It should just be flat around the, around the opening for the garage.
Yeah.
And you're, you're saying the same thing for the windows?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think if we go through the photos, like even these two, we don't have either of those, right? We don't have those flat trims. And then it's just not a, it's not a detail that you typically see on any of these carriage houses. I think if there's any projecting element that is more consistent, it would be some sort of a projection at the sill. Because we've got
The two cells would project a little bit. And that's it for each of those windows. Everything else is just recessed.
Right.
And no trim. And and minimal to surround just whatever you absolutely have to have for the framing and preferably not to show at all, if possible, of the, the 17-foot door.
Mike, is that possible?
Absolutely. We just, just return the stucco back in. So it'll be a face, very clean lines with the stucco returning back into the window.
Great.
Okay, and then if you want, if you're interested in that sill under the windows, we can do that. And that can be done in a stucco version, if you'd like. Just to, just to show a little bit and it could be identified as a separate color to look like a sill or you could just keep.
Let's go, let's look at that sill. Let's again look at that projecting, the projection of the cornice and then go back to the elevation drawing. Because I think we're pretty close. I mean, I think the window, the openings, we're, we're all talking about the same thing. So the elevation drawing would be great. So I, I think that that projecting cornice and also something that's a bit beefy at the sill lines and, and like you can certainly figure that out.
A wonderful contrasting material instead of stucco or something covered with stucco.
Yeah.
Most of them have sandstone.
Right.
Look on it.
Right.
But a contrasting material and a contrasting color on the, the little bit of trim that you have on those windows, which is the only thing they have is the, the two cells.
Right.
They don't have to be covered with stucco. They could look like stone or be, be stone.
Concrete slabs.
And what do others think about the projecting cor, the cornice line here?
Most of them have absolute minimum.
Um, in the drawings, it's not, it's in your packet. It's not shown on the slide, but Mike did render it as being capped. So it is a metal, I believe, a metal cap on the cornice line.
But essentially at the plane of the stucco.
I'm on Zoom, can't talk.
The drawing appears as it protrudes somewhat, no?
Well, the drawing on the right here shows it just like a one by six or a one by
So little to no
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a pretty consistent feature up and down the alley and it would fit very nicely if that was constructed.
Not a problem.
What is constructed, Marilyn?
A projecting, a cornice with some projection.
So are you thinking
Oh, now go back, go back, go back. You just said something. Let's see, what was?
That's the backside.
Yeah, okay.
All those exposed headers that you see above every opening, garage door opening, a window opening, that, that exposure of it, just being able to see it is definitely an ornamental feature amongst this entire alleyway. I like seeing that old timber up in there, that piece of steel. That's, that's quite unique.
Yeah, the alleys are pretty special. There's so few of them. They're really special.
And it's not ornamentation, but it's exposed and it was left exposed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the As, as the resident who lives here, it, I, I have enjoyed the, the alley very much and you know, there are a couple neighbors at the very bottom of the alley and they've got a beautiful carriage house, that picture there on the left, which you've shown and there, there, it's, it's really been a great neighborhood, I will say. So
Nice.
Yeah. Yep.
So could you go back, Aaron, just to where you were? Okay. So here, the building on the left, another stucco, or these two. So we don't have brick. We've kind of moved beyond feel, it, it sounds like we moved beyond it needing to be brick as Bob described. And, but I think that it's such a flat facade then, the stucco. We, we talked about just the two projecting elements at the sills and the second floor windows, but here's probably a really good example of these two photos of just the, the compatibility of that projecting cornice kind of right down the, right down the lane, even when we've got this very flat finish, this planer finish of the stucco. So that would be, I'd like to see that. I don't know how strongly anyone else feels. And then I think we got a, yeah, it's some nice stuff there.
Oh, wow. There we go.
On the issue of the overhang, I think it should be up to the, up to the homeowner, either to make it flush as it originally was, or the next door neighbor is, or to consider that as an option to have a protrusion of reasonable amount, small but noticeable for contrast. And that, I think that's the, the choice of the homeowner. Cause it, we could go for either one of the two options. One is flush or basically flush and the other having a, a more decorative feature, feature to it that comes out at least as far as the, as the sills do. Either one, I think, is acceptable.
You know, the cornice could just be simply a, a board, a fascia board with a trim piece above it and then the, the cap flashing over it. That would be an inch proud of the, the surface of the stucco. You know, to kind of hint at a, a cornice without being a, a buildup projecting cornice. I mean, there, there's, you know.
Chris, I believe your dog has something to say on the cornice matter.
Apparently. But you know, we're seeing both in the, the slides that we've been reviewing. We've seen both a, a very trim kind of top of wall with just a flashing. And then we've seen others with a projecting cornice. I think the projecting cornice probably historically was on most of them. And subsequent re-roofing jobs may have eliminated that because it deteriorated. So I, I think there's a history here of, of both expressions.
I think a lot of them were removed, as you said.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, for me, it has real value, a little bit larger than what you were, John, just describing, because we don't have any texture at the facade. With the stucco, we don't have any texture. It's pretty flat. And there's a lot of texture going up and down the alley through the brick. And I, I think that the added projection and the shadow line and the cat at the cap. Erin, you had a nice photo that had two, two of the stucco ones side by side.
Yeah.
No, the one side by side. I just think it softens the building, so the, it, it softens the facade a bit. It looks a little less boxy and modern. I mean, I, I under, it's not a clear cut situation for the reasons that people have spoke, spoken of. But there's not much texture that we're going to get under that new stucco facade. So I guess that's. Yeah.
Well, it could, it could go either way. I mean, it's, and as Jack says, I think that may be a consideration that you know, we provide the, the guidance that a, a cornice of some modest proportion or evoking the sense of a cornice up there would be a, a nice feature to add to the building. And that's a detail that can be developed in the, in the construction phase. And I think with the, the stucco returns at the openings and kind of smoothing things out a bit and the projecting sill at the two windows at the second level. And then some, some hint at a cornice, you know, would be all elements that could, you know, be very compatible with their neighbors and provide some relief to that elevation, as you've described, Marilyn. Even that last image that you had, Erin. That one, the second house down, the, the cornice there is merely a corbeled out projection of brickwork. And you could do something from a, a textural, not, not the texture of brickwork, but you know, as a contrast to the stucco, have a, a board up there as a fascia that is applied and would evoke the character of a cornice without building one out and projecting it off the building more than an inch or two inches, whatever wants to be built out there. I don't think we want to get stuck on this issue. I think, you know, we've certainly, are there any other issues related to the, the proposal that need to be flushed out further?
Not for me.
Yeah.
Okay. I did have one question that came up this afternoon. Mike, if you can maybe address this, was the placement of the trim board on the side and rear elevations? If that could maybe be pulled down to the floor level where an indication of, you know, where that, the joy star? Or is that just, is it placed there because that's the extent of the material? Or could that be pulled down a little bit to kind of give an indication of the floor levels?
The reason where we did that separation.
You're frozen.
I'm vertical Hardybacker panel that you're seeing being applied comes in only ten foot sheets.
Okay.
So what we were doing, if you took from the base of where we're going to be, I want to say the base of the wall on the foundation wall, we ran it up ten feet. And then at that point, we, we did some just a little transition detail around it. So we could then just basically now use one tenth foot board I could cut in the place of doing two. You know what I'm saying? So when I get above there, I, one sheet will now give me two across the way. And I was just doing it from a cross, a cross perspective.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
A few additional sheets, but you know, to that, that's a choice that's up, you know, to you guys and Bob.
Yeah, I just want to say that when you show pictures of my house on the back of the house, it looks very disorganized and there's a lot of junk and crap. For the record, most of that junk and crap will be stored in the new garage. So there will otherwise be a clean and neat appearance of the back of our house. Not my proudest moment as we speak.
That's what we all have garages for.
Everything except cars.
Yeah.
No, Jack, I intend to use our garage for cars there. We won't have that much junk that we can't do cars. I was, in fact, on Marsdale Street, I, I kind of joked that several of our neighbors all had two car garages, but were unable to put two cars in their garage. And for the record, we always had two cars at seventy-one Marsdale.
Very good.
Good. It's a disciplined garage.
So are we ready to make a motion? And it sounds like maybe the, you've laid out a choice for the, the applicant for Bob and Michael to kind of come back to staff relative to proposed treatment at the cornice. But the other items are all, are all set?
Yeah, entertain a motion if someone would like to make one.
Second.
I guess that was a motion.
I guess that was a motion.
So the, the motion is to clarify, we're removing the vertical boards, flanking the door and the windows and just returning the stucco back to the, the door and window frame at the, the jams and that there would be a, the jams in the head. And there would be a projecting element at the sill. And that the optional treatment of the, the capital of the building to terminate the top wall is the, yeah, we've suggested a couple of different approaches and it's up to the applicant to decide how they want to address that issue to, to terminate the top of the wall. And then return that to Erin, just as a, a little sketch detail to illustrate what's proposed there.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any audience members logged in, Erin?
Let me stop this.
You're gonna unmute them or something?
We didn't have anyone sign up. So I would ask if you do have any comments, if you could just raise your hand and chat next to your name, that would be helpful.
I think Chris Hacker's dog had something to say about it. I don't know if that was taking into account.
You need it.
My dog had two cents as well, but I keep trying to mute him.
I hope he's in favor.
Of course.
Supportive dogs all around.
Excellent.
Um, it doesn't look like we have anyone, John, so.
We have a motion on the, the table. It's been moved and seconded. Do we?
Or before you take a vote, if we could just note, if I could make a note for the record, that this property is the mayor's property, to the extent that all of you have a certain relationship with the mayor, the rule of necessity would apply. So none of you would be conflicted in this case, just to put that on the record.
Thank you for that legal judgment.
Thank you.
Always helpful to keep us honest.
And Amy, now that you brought that up, I also just want to bring this forward as well, is that the USDA, the regulations within the USDA is that accessory units or accessory buildings cannot be taller than one and a half stories. The historic resource overlay criteria is the stricter requirement in this case, where we have standards that require that new construction be compatible in height, scale and massing with other historic structures on the block and within the district. And so this does not require review by the BCA, which in other cases outside of historic districts, anything over one and a half stories would have to go for a variance.
I agree with you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the matter to a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by waving your hand.
Aye.
All right, okay, we have a sufficient number of waivers here. So I'm assuming, Norman, did you wave? I think we have unanimous consent here, so.
Yep.
The motion is passed.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, thank you and good luck.
You, thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to see everyone. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for securing that historic building. It was much endangered and particularly on that west wall. And you've made a real effort and that'll be there for generations. Thank you.
Well, you can thank Mike for that, Jack.
It was a lot of fun.
Listen, thank you all. Appreciate the time and have a nice evening. And, and I, we're set to go. You don't need me for anything else. Is that correct, Erin?
That is it. I will follow up with the conditions from the approval tonight. And we'll go from there.
Great.
All right.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye, Mike.
Erin, are there any other matters, new business, old business to bring before the commission?
I don't have anything at this time, so we have, I, we have one item for the next meeting on June third. That's consideration for the National Register nomination for the, the National Biscuit Company Buildings, where CAP rep is currently working to, working on to relocate and the building that Albany Distilling is currently in. So we will be reviewing that at the next, next HRC meeting.
Okay. Good. Are there any items that any of the commissioners want to bring before the group?
Once again, there has been demolition and I'd like to see the photographs of places that have been torn down.
Okay. Where were the recent, where were the recent demolitions?
Um, there was.
North Albany, wasn't it North Albany, on Mohawk Street or something like that? I read it in the paper. Fire damage.
Yeah, there was a fire.
Regardless of whether it's on the register or not, there should be, the amount of money we pay for demolition, there should be photographs of future generations can look and say, yes, this was the boyhood home of whomever. Historically, it was built by such and such, and once it's gone, it's gone.
Um, I have been getting some of the structural reports within the last week or so. I am going to try to figure out how to set up some sort of other through Dropbox, but put those reports in there for you all to go in and look at, so.
It'll become important in the future too. I mean, if you have an area around Pine Hills, it's not now part of our official concern. Within the next so many years, somebody's going to add something in and you'd like to say, what was there originally? And see, ah, that was demolition. Here's a portrait of it, or here's a picture of it and so on. And you can see that, how it was done from an architectural point of view and how a neighborhood was built. If you just tear it down like it's so much junk, then you steal a part of the, of the history. And we spend a lot of money demolishing buildings and taking a picture is not that expensive.
Again, I'm going to, I'm going to be on a webinar tomorrow about just observing it, about compliance codes and compliance and COVID nineteen and housing, community, Center for Community Progress. I don't know if anybody else signed up for that. But my own thinking is that the protection of the existing buildings for housing over the next while of recovery is going to be terribly essential in the city of Albany, in any city. And we, of course, don't know how the large projects will fare, given the finances. We have no idea. But I think that the single buildings and retaining those as residences for the, the fully diverse, financially diverse citizens in the city is going to be absolutely essential. And I suspect that's what I'll, we'll hear about tomorrow is how do those things, how do those things connect together? Because every time we lose those, we lose the opportunity for someone to have and own, you know, a, a single family home and to build equity there. So it's a complicated and an interesting conversation and I'm very looking forward to it. How you protect the buildings so that they don't fall across that line and end up being vacated and demolished. And of course, our, our world is these historic buildings, I think is really, really critical because they provide housing for people representing very, very, very different levels of affordability. And um, I think we want to be mindful, to be mindful of that. I do want to say also, if anyone gets to see it, I sat in on the uh, the um webinar, Zoom call, or whatever it was, last week on that project in the South End, right? Right south of St. Peters on Second Avenue, that large.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, yeah.
Second Avenue, yes.
Yeah. And uh, I think there's two or three community meetings on Zoom, and if you have the opportunity to watch one of them, uh, it's pretty interesting. Again, I, it's early on in some ways. They've, they've got a lot invested into it. I think it's a very good and creative architectural firm out of Brooklyn that's got a lot of experience with housing that's working on it. And um, uh, I guess it's right adjacent to our district, if not, it's not within the boundaries, right?
Right.
You're not talking about all seventeen, school seventeen, are you?
No, so this is um.
Speaking of endangered.
Across from school seventeen where the um Catholic Church.
Yes, yes. Alcoholic.
Right, same here, it's right there. It's behind.
Just to the south.
That.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the school's back there. Anyway, it's a very interesting project. It's big. There's a couple hundred units. I think at some point it slopes down. It's up to seven stories. I mean, there's a lot to just in terms of urban development. I think it's very interesting to, to observe and talk about and um, but that's, the ability for a large project to happen is really different than the ability to build and strengthen new neighborhoods when people can afford single buildings and own those buildings rather than at a larger scale, a few hundred units. So I think both are, you know, both of course are important. So if you get the opportunity or if I come by another notice of it, I'll send it, or Erin, maybe you could send it to everyone. I think the second one occurred already. But um, this issue of protecting the buildings that we have is very critical to strengthening neighborhoods over the next period of time when things are gonna be so hard.
Yeah, thank you for that. If there's nothing else to discuss, um, I would call a motion to adjourn and await our next Zoom meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye bye.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest.
When is the next meeting?
The next meeting is on June 3rd.
And that's the National Biscuit Company Property.
Two fifty-one.
Designation, status, you know.
And it's the only item on the agenda, so.
Okay. And we have the meeting outdoors at the site?
Why not?
Oh, I'd love to do that.
Don our masks and, you know.
Yes.
They're six feet apart.
Very doable. Let's do it. Okay.
Good night all.
Good night all. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Have a good night. Thanks a lot.
Night.
We can't have the meeting at the site.
What's that?